Committee meeting to order, the Planning, Zoning, and Building Committee meeting of September 13, 2012. I'm going to take your, please call the roll.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Lazara.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Here.
Alderman Shaki.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
I declare quorum. Next item, report and recommendation, the Stormwater and Floodplain Management Text Amendment. With that being said, Mr. Forrest. I'm sorry, I'm going to back up. Motion approved, and it is stated August 23, 2012. Is there a second?
Second.
Anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item now, we're to the report and recommendation, Stormwater and Floodplain Management Text Amendment. Mr. Forrest.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just quickly, I think probably all of you are aware that the city of Wooddale is what's called a full waiver community when it comes to stormwater management permits. And what that means is that when we get applications for stormwater management permits, when somebody's doing construction or disturbing basically more than 5,000 square feet on a property, that means when their plans are submitted to us, we're able to review those in-house and go ahead and issue the stormwater management permit. If we were not a full waiver community, anytime we got plans of that type, we would have to send them to DuPage County, they would do their reviews, send them back. So we're kind of cutting them, cutting the middleman out, so to speak. The reason that we have been allowed to be a full waiver community is that because historically the city of Wooddale has always adopted stormwater management ordinance that are at least equal to, or stricter than the DuPage County stormwater management ordinance. Recently, DuPage County revised and amended the stormwater management ordinance that they have at the county level, which means if we want to keep our full waiver status, we have to do the same, either adopt theirs, or one that is slightly stricter than that. So that's what is before you this evening. Since the stormwater management ordinance is contained in the Unified Development Ordinance, this is also, it's considered a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance. This was presented at the CDC, and I believe they voted unanimously to go ahead and approve this. There are a couple of gentlemen here from Baxter Woods to answer any other questions that you might have on this.
Okay, great. Okay. Are there any questions from the committee here? Alderman Roy Wesley.
John Wooden was at the stormwater meeting?
It was at Community Development.
Let me rephrase the question then.
Okay.
Was Baxman Wooden even at that meeting?
They weren't at the PZB meeting, no.
The stormwater?
No. No. The stormwater meeting they're at, they weren't at the Plan Commission meeting.
Okay. You don't have to look it up. That's what I was looking for, that they're here for questions, and they weren't even at the meeting.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to approve a text amendment to amend Article 8, Chapter 17 of the Municipal Code of the City of Wooddale to update city storm and floodplain management regulations to be consistent with DuPage County regulations. Is there a second?
Second.
Anything further on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the Front Street renovation project, and thank you, Baxman Wooden, for coming out and being here to answer any questions, should there have been any, and thank you for your work on this.
All right, thank you, Madam Chairman. Again, just a small thumbnail history. City of Wooddale has always been concerned in trying to improve and better not only the appearance of the Wooddale Road and Irving Park corridors, but to try and attract, you know, nice businesses consistent with, you know, the community that we would like to have. Several years ago, the city did offer a program to the business owners where I believe we offered them a $2,000 stipend if they wanted to fix up the facades of their building. At that time, we were still not really sure. That was when the whole Irving Park reroute plans were coming along. We really didn't know what was going to happen, what businesses were going to be there, what businesses were going to be gone from there. I believe only one business took advantage of that and then added funds of their own and redid the building. That was Christie's Restaurant. Through the years, it seems like the Irving Park reroute has finally been dissolved and kind of put to bed for, so to speak. Yet, there are still properties on Irving Park, particularly in the town center area, that are still in need of a little bit of help. So I think, again, you all remember last November, the mayor and Ross Clicker and I attended the Illinois Association of Architects, their annual conference. They graciously agreed to do a design charrette for us. We targeted a couple of key buildings on Front Street and, you know, under the plan of what can we do with some type of public-private partnership to improve the appearances of these buildings and possibly then also improve, you know, some of the businesses in that area, kind of change the whole flavor in that area that's, this kind of ties in with the town center business district zoning, where we want to try and get more pedestrian-friendly areas. We picked buildings that are probably the most visible to anybody traveling through town, either by car or by train. And the thing that kind of really helped us along on this is that both property owners are very excited about this, they're willing to participate, and the first step we really needed to do before we could come up with some costs involved in this was to hire an architectural firm. And again, you voted to hire an architectural firm earlier this spring. We've got some renderings that they've come up with based on designs that were presented at the design charrette. And the next step is for you to decide, as you're looking at these plans, if this is the direction you want to go. If so, we can give the green light to the architect. At that point, they can come up with some working plans that will be detailed enough where contractors can actually come up with some hard numbers. We'll know what kind of costs we're going to be looking at. At that point, we can work with the property owners and say it's going to cost X amount, we'd like you to put in X amount of X amount, and let's see if we can make this work. So, go back to the first photos. Just quickly, we put some photos together of what's existing out there now. These are the buildings that are targeted. And then the next grouping of photos are the architect's renderings of what he thinks we can do out there. Again, this is kind of keeping with the general Prairie-style design, so the buildings will coordinate with the bank building across the street. And of course, with the train station, they used some design elements that you see at the train station, mainly the columns with the covered walkway. And then they incorporated some other elements in there, the lighting and so forth. The thing that we're going for is a common sign banding right above that lower roof so that all the signage on both buildings will be the same. On the east side of the two-story building, the thought is to put a second set of windows in there. That property owner would like to get some sort of, perhaps, a coffee shop or something in there, and typically, these coffee shops like to have visibility on two sides. To the right in this drawing, the large section of wall, we've discussed the possibility of perhaps getting the art department at Fenton High School involved, or some sort of an artist, and maybe do a mural on that wall that would reflect key elements of the history of Wooddale, something like that. So at this point, what staff is looking for would be a consensus of the council that this is a direction that you like, you think you would work there, and as I said, we can give him the green light to do working drawings that will be detailed enough where we can actually put together some numbers of what this is going to cost.
One question of mine, now I realize we don't have the numbers yet, of course, but just by the, like, rough picture here, that do you think this is going to be within the property owner's budgets of what they're looking at doing? Have we, you know, talked with them at all to know that we're at least in line?
It's hard to say, but the reason we want to go forward with this is the thing, we can then plug in some variables, different types of materials, perhaps cutting back on the design. If the architectural plans are completed and we go to contractors and they come up with, just for lack of, say, $500,000, property owners might say, you know what, that's a little rich for our blood, that's more than we feel comfortable spending. At that point, the city would have to determine, you know, how much, what kind of a percentage of sharing we would want to do, or then subsequently, we could also then maybe scale back the design a little bit, or, you know, have a couple of different types of materials that could be used. For example, there's a lot of ways you can accomplish this. We just have to, we need a starting point.
Okay.
So that's really what we're looking at. The contract that was awarded, the architect, will cover the cost. You know, we've already come to an agreement with him, he is going to provide working drawings under the contract price that we've already agreed to, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
John, since we already went that far, is the owner of these businesses going to contribute to the architect drawings, or give us some money for us paying for that?
At this point, no. At this point, you know, the city is going to provide plans that will be at least, there may need to be additional plans done at that point. Then we would have to decide if we're going to turn any additional architectural costs over to the property owners, or if we want to do that. But we should get what we need from the architects to put costs together with the contract amount that we've already agreed upon with them.
May I do a follow-up?
Now, there is one other.
Yes.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
There is one additional rendering in here, and I'm sorry, I wasn't able to put that on the PowerPoint that you all got in your packets. What that is, is a survey of the property. And as you can see, part of the design here is to remove the parking that's immediately in front of this building, widen the sidewalks, again, to go with that pedestrian-type environment. And on this survey, what we did, we scaled it off and we created, they'll actually gain a few parking spaces if we move the parking to the south side of the parking lot, as opposed to how it's set up now. And what we would do would be, coming off of Elmwood, it would be a one-way west through that parking lot until you got to roughly where the State Farm office is. At that point, going west of there, that would begin two-way traffic again. That would allow people, if they were taking the Front Street bypass, for example, to Wooddale Road, drove by the building, went, oh, I need to get a bottle of wine, and I'd like to stop at the liquor store, they can then turn right on Walnut, turn right, and still access this parking area. But by making this one-way east, at least for part of this, that will allow us easily to widen that sidewalk, create the pedestrian area, allow for some landscaping there and that type of thing.
Thank you. Do you still wish to follow up? Okay, go ahead.
The other question is, how long is it going to take him to get that architect design, or whatever we can do next phase? What are we looking here?
I would think if you give us direction this evening to proceed with that, that they should be able to come up with some renderings. You know, I would have to say within a month.
So the businesses have already seen some of this already that we?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yes, this was presented at a meeting with the business owners, and then also to the Streetscape and Economic Enhancement Committee. They've seen these, we wanted to go to them before we brought it to council to kind of gauge their support. The Streetscape Committee, you know, they discussed it, they looked at all the photos, thought it was great, and they unanimously said, go forward with it. The property owners have seen these designs, they're also very excited about it, so.
So every property owner over there is in favor of going forward with this?
Correct. Well, we're only dealing with two, so that makes it a little easier.
Well, that makes you. Thank you.
Alderman Lazara.
John, on this particular design, first of all, are we, do we own the sidewalks that go around this building?
No. Again, if you can look at that site plan, we actually own part of the sidewalk in front of the one-story building, which is the liquor store.
Okay.
But then that property line continues straight east, so this two-story building is slightly angled on the lot, so the sidewalk in front of that building is owned by the property owner.
Because this particular design, I'm looking at those posts that are in the sidewalk, would that be considered our property? If we would go with this design, and if it is, then who would be obligated for the maintenance of these?
If we go with this design, that would be located on the property owner's property, and they would assume responsibility for maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Woods.
Yeah, I would just like to make a recommendation, give staff the recommendation to move forward with the plans as presented.
Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
There's a motion, is there a second? Anything further on the question? Alderman Roy Wesley.
John, you've been talking to the owners on this, I understand. Has the city been, has, we have no idea what this is going to cost, I take it?
Correct.
Does the owner have any idea what this is going to cost? Probably not.
No.
How is he financially? Have we done some? I don't want to know how his finances are or anything, but I would think that the city would do some research on his financials to see if he could even afford this. I mean, we're going to spend all this money on this engineering, and what happens? All of a sudden, boom. I don't have money to do this.
Mr. Forrest.
Yes. Both property owners, actually, when Ross and I initially approached them, actually, the property owner that owns the liquor store and the State Farm building was just about ready to start having plans prepared on his own to do some extensive remodeling at both buildings. So he does have some monies put away for that, and the owner of the two-story building was actually getting ready, you know, starting to get ready to do some renovations on his own as well. So, you know, as far as researching their financial background, we haven't done that yet. They both seem very confident that, you know, it shouldn't be that much of an issue. Again, depending on the costs. There's got to be a ceiling on the costs, but until, I mean, we're kind of putting the cart before the horse. You know, we are spending a little money to have these architectural renderings done, but until we get some hard numbers from the contractors, we really don't know what we're talking about.
Could I?
Follow up, one last time, and then I'll call out a few others.
I hope that the city's not going to, if something happens, he doesn't have the money, we're not just going to hand over the plans to him and say, okay, well, have a nice day. I take it that these will stay on city properties and stay in the city's hands.
At this point, the plans are the property of the city, correct? Yes, they're correct.
Alderman Shaki.
If this can be done, it would be a giant step for Irving Park Road. I mean, that area now looks so bad, and if we can get something like this done, even if we have to contribute some money, it's well worthwhile. The only question I have is, we have ordinances now, at, say, you have to have so much of the window open to the public. Do we enforce those at all, especially on the liquor store over there? I'd hate to see us build something like this that looks so nice, and then have the windows plastered up again, so you can't even see inside.
No, that subject's already been discussed with them, and that's not going to happen.
I'd like to see it even changed before this is started. Thank you.
Alderman Coles.
We tried this once before, and it, there was only one person that came forward, and I think it's a very good idea, and it would match the railroad station, which we had built a couple of years ago, and it's on the same principle of design. So we've done many, many drawings, we've done many, many engineerings that have fell through, and nobody's ever complained about the price, so I think it's a very good idea that we spend that a little extra money to have it done, and then at least it'll be on record in case it happens, maybe not this year, but maybe next year. We at least have the engineering, and we can always contact a draftsman that had done it, and he can revise it a little bit. So I think it's a very good idea. I'm for it.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is items to be considered at future meetings. Does anyone wish to add anything? Let it be known, I did my committee in 20 minutes on game night. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. And there's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Call the Public Works Committee to order. I'm going to take a note, the same people are present, I need a motion approved, minutes I'll make the motion.
Second.
Approved the minutes for August 23. I have a second, any changes, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number four, reported recognition, pay request, partial HR green for Irving Park Road, Wooddale Road intersection, safety improvement, Phase Two, not to exceed amount of $69,696.91. That is my motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five is reported recognition, contract award amendment, HR green, not to exceed amount of $128,374.00 for Phase Two engineer serving in Irving Park Road and Wooddale Road intersection, safety improvement. That is my motion. Second.
Second.
Questions? No questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Opposed? No opposed. Item number six, reported recognition, list approved engineers. You guys received the list of the engineers? I believe Mr. Woods, are you taking a floor on this, Mr. Woods? I just would like to add to the motion that, to expand on the list of engineers and get a new list of their qualifications too, to update the list. That is my motion. Do I have a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Question. Alderman Roy Wesley.
I'd like to add another one on here, Robinson's Engineering. And then there's another one I'd like to add to, which I gave the packet, the packet went to the city manager yesterday.
Okay. All right, let's, I have one that, we'll get back to that question, answer, okay?
I think the motion is a statement of qualifications. Basically, these 17 names on this list are going to disappear and going to create a new list. Some of these names have been here for years, so that's why a statement of qualifications for everybody, and anybody, some have already, a couple have already submitted some paperwork because they wish to get on the list.
Okay.
That's, I believe there was some motion, correct?
That is correct. Question, Winger?
I'd like another company to be added to then be sent out the packet of information, that would be White Construction.
So I would, so what they're going to do is that they're going, the committee that was formed, I believe the committee was formed by the mayor, am I correct, Mayor? Go ahead.
Yes, we had a first meeting, Alderman Woods and Alderman Winger, the manager and myself, basically, statement of qualifications. It's going to be, it's going to be publicized, correct? We might have 30 people apply, whittle it down, and then the council will basically pick the list. I don't know, council wants to go with seven. Right now, we have 17, maybe the council only wants 10 on the list. Bring it back to the council to decide.
I have a motion, I have a, go ahead, Alderman Roy Wesley.
So how long are we going to give them until the RSVP, or?
I think 30 minutes.
I can send out the advertisement, I'd probably say within a week to two weeks, and then we'll give them a couple of weeks to submit, and then we'd have to have time for review. I think the whole process could probably be done within a two-month timeframe on the
I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Who opposed?
Nobody opposed.
Reporting recognition, pay request, partial pay request, two, Art Dunham and Corporations Metro Parking Lot Improvement Project, not to exceed $311,349.63. That is my motion. Second. I have one question. How many more payments are we looking at here? Go ahead.
I would assume there would just be one final payment after this. The work is nearly complete.
I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item number eight, reported recognition, pay request, partial, partial one, standby power upgrade, South Water Treatment Plant Electric Company Incorporated, not to exceed That is my motion. Second. Questions? Concerns? Mr. Woods, does anybody have a handle on how much is left on this project? I thought we were almost done with this one. Go ahead.
Yes, this, this pay request is for, I believe, what is it, for $255,000. The total contract value is $357,000, so this is the first pay request. It's also very large because it includes the generator, and then the rest of the work is pretty minimal compared to what's been done now.
Okay, thank you.
I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, reported recognition, pay request, partial four, maximum construction incorporation for the North Water wastewater treatment upgrade Phase One project, not to exceed $423,295.30. That is my motion. I have a second. Questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, items considered in future meetings. Alderman Roy Wesley.
I just want to bring up something here that last week, when we approved the bills, that Baxman Wooden was pulled, and it's been over a week now, and Baxman Wooden still has not been paid. As, when we, when I looked at the bill, all you seen was a bunch of names and hours, and not a breakdown. It's been a week now, correct, Mr. Manager?
Yeah, a week today. I did speak with Jason before the meeting, I was told I'm going to get those tomorrow for sure. I did request them right after you requested them, so.
Okay.
There was quite a bit of bills that needed to be revised, so.
But there was a lot of money there?
Yeah, we did hold the check over, so.
And I, and I believe it's for, not an itemized bill like that, for that amount of money, I can't believe that it wasn't itemized more because it just had names and hours. So, just so you know that if it comes again like that, I'm going to request that again, that it behold. If we don't get a list of where these projects and where these hours are being billed, we need to watch the projects, so. And I just want to bring up about Central, too. I have some customers on Central, and they weren't, they were supposed to be paved last Saturday. The people got their notice that it was supposed to be paved, and it wasn't paved. I found out today from the manager that it's going to be done this week or next week. I'm just kind of upset about this whole situation because Baxman Wooden, we've seen them changing employees, this and that. I hear from the Lou, his name is, a couple of weeks ago, Baxman Wooden's going to get better service. I think our residents deserve more than what we're getting. I think our residents deserve more than what we're getting right now. And if Baxman Woodman can't perform, time to look for someone else. And I can't believe it anymore. Better service. I can't see it. Because the, the residents are seeing it now, too. That's it.
Going to, I believe, Central is gonna be, final pavement will be on Monday, the seventeenth. Aldrin Roy Wesley.
That's besides the point of when it's gonna be done now, the residents were supposed to get notices, and they got notices when it was supposed to be done, it wasn't done, and the people are sitting there with signs that says, no parking on the street, da-da-da-da. So their, their life is, I mean, this, Central was dug up, what, three years ago, and then these people had to deal with this again?
No, nineteen, 2004. 2004 it was dug up. That's when they rebuilt the street. Get your information right. Okay, I'm not gonna sit here and go through an argument on that, but.
All right, well, we'll check in to find out what the deal is. I, I don't know if it's a contract, go ahead.
Yeah, Central Avenue will be repaved Monday. We did give notices again to, to let the residents know, yet they were scheduled to be paved Saturday, but, you know, as much as we try, we can't control the contractor schedule.
Let's send another notice out right away?
We did.
When?
We sent it out in the, I think it was Wednesday or Thursday of this week, for the, for, for the paving that's gonna be on Monday.
So what I'm saying is?
I think it's forty-eight hours, we're, we're gonna, we'll have the notices out forty-eight hours before the work happens.
The point is, they were expecting it Saturday, you should've sent out a notice Monday and say, sorry, it didn't get done, da-da-da-da. Instead, residents sit there. They don't deserve it. They don't deserve to be treated this way. And they won't be. As long as I'm here, they're not gonna be treated that way.
Okay. All right, any other items on a future meeting? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, there's no finance committee tonight, but I, I can ask one question to staff on finances. I read in a paper today that there's an early bird, or sunshine, or some kind of new ordinance with this, with the state, that if you finish projects sometime in January or your February, that there's an additional fifteen percent off. Do we have anything that would qualify for that?
I'd have to get together with you after the meeting and get some, some details and work it out, I, we can look into it.
If you would, please, I thank you. That's all I have.
Do we adjourn yet?
Yeah.
Okay.